Good morning, Commissioners, and welcome to the Monday, January 28, 2013 workshop of the Orlando City Council. For those of you standing in the back, we have an overflow room. John, we've never had a more packed house than this, I believe. But we're excited to have you here and to hear about the progress of Lynx. So this morning, we're going to have an update from the Executive Director of Lynx, and I think you all know that I'm now the Chair of the Board there. John is going to give us an overview of the changes and impacts on the changing demographics of our community. John has been with us two years now?
Two years, sir.
A little over two years. And I think when he first came, he thought that this was going to be the epicenter of transportation, not just in Florida, but the whole southeast, because we had Sunrail going, we had high-speed rail going, we had expansions of limo going, and the only thing we lost out on was high-speed rail. And now we've got Florida East Coast coming, so we'll have not a high speed, but a faster train for Miami to Orlando that looks like it's going to come to fruition. And we've had double-digit increases in ridership at Lynx. We've broken ground on two additional segments of the limo system. So I would argue that despite not having high-speed rail, we're still the epicenter of transportation in the southeast. So tell us about Lynx.
No question, sir. And I would still think that we are probably the epicenter of transportation innovation here in central Florida. So everyone else's eyes are still on us as we continue to move forward in providing new methods of providing public transit options, whether it's FEC or other alternatives that are out there. It's certainly good to be in the public transit business in central Florida right now. So we're probably one of the few industries that are on a growth curve right now. And it's always good to be before council, particularly in a time where I'm not coming asking for money. But just wanted to give you a general overview of what the path forward is for Lynx. Last year, our Board of Directors ratified our Vision 2030 Plan, which is our long-range vision for public transit. Now we're really digging in and looking at from more of a tactical standpoint of how do we make that vision come about? And there are certain items that I think will help illuminate what our challenge is moving forward and what our goals are and objectives for meeting that. We're looking at creating a 21st century sustainable transportation system. I think one thing that is absolutely without question is the high quality of life we have here in central Florida. Everyone comes to central Florida, not only to visit, but it's also more of a destination, and people are moving here in droves, as you know. And Orlando is the epicenter of that. We've had, every time it seems I open the paper, newspaper, The Sentinel or The Business Journal, it seems like there's one accolade after another. And none of you are, this will not surprise any of you, of all the accolades that we've had. But there are certain trends that are shaping our region that we have to be mindful of and keep our eyes on as we're moving forward. And two, from an operational standpoint, there are two very important trends that I think we are certainly keeping our eye on at Lynx, but I think is also illuminating some of the opportunities and challenges we have as the central Florida region. That is the generational dynamics and the demographic and cultural trends that we are looking forward to in the coming years. And as we move those together, gives us the opportunity to really take a look at our future. Number one is without question, the increasing number of residents and visitors. By 2015, 2050, excuse me, according to the Penn Design Study, Orlando's population could double over the baseline of the 2005 level. Trend number two is something that demographers and from an operational standpoint, we're looking at is the impact of Gen Y, that new younger generation. And it's a tidal wave coming. There are over 80 million people who fit that demographic who were born between 1982 and 2001, who are now between the years of 10 years old and 29. When you look at that from a demographic standpoint, you look at the Gen Y and the Boomers, those two cohorts by far outweigh, outnumber every other generation that is currently alive in North America. One item I think that is very interesting from that standpoint is the impact that Gen Y has on our development and our operations. This is a statistic that I think jumped out at me when I first looked at it. In the year 1990, 43% of 16-year-olds got their driver's license within three months, 90 days of their 16th birthday. You look at 2010, that's down to 31%. And I think there are many different explanations of that, but if I can take a little bit of personal look at it, I look at my 14-year-old daughter, and I remember one time coming out, and she's on the phone furiously texting. I asked her who she was talking to, and it's her, she's very close with her 17-year-old cousin who lives in North Carolina. She said Connie's on the phone, she's on her first date. I said, well, leave her alone. And finally, we looked at it. She is texting every second of what's going on through that conversation with all of her friends and all of her cohorts and everyone. But I think the impact that technology has had on communication, when you look at certainly my generation, we reached the age of 16, access to mom and dad's car was access to independence and access to a wider social network. This Generation Y gets those social interactions immediately in real time through technology. So you see that absolute decrease in driver's license. So we have a new generation that is a less auto-centric mindset. You combine that with the other side of that cohort, which is the Baby Boomer generation, 76 million of them. You look at those two cohorts coming through, there's an age wave coming at us. 10,000 people reached the age of 62 each and every day since last year, January 1st of 2011. What that looks like from a ground level, today, 1 in 7 people on I-4 will be 65 and older. When you look at that in 2030, it'd be 1 in 4. That paints a very different vision of what getting around central Florida will be moving forward. But I think from a Lynx standpoint, that's an opportunity. When we're looking at Orlando's future, central Florida's future, we have more older generation with mobility challenges, but really also with very clear and high expectations. The Baby Boomers have been described as a, that generation who is very well-prepared for that next chapter in life, will be, remain very active in their communities, and they'll continue to look for opportunities to stay active, to enter into new phases of life, whether that's start a new business, volunteer in their community. But the challenge that they will have is mobility challenges. And we think when you look at, I was at an Urban Land Institute discussion a couple of months ago, and they were talking that it is these cohorts that are driving the renaissance of our urban areas again. Baby Boomers who are leaving the suburbs and coming back into our urban areas because of the high quality of life, access to medical facilities, recreation, cultural attractions that our cities offer, along with that younger generation who isn't looking for a car to get out and about, who are looking for other means of attracting that quality of life. So how will these trends impact Orlando? What we're looking for at Lynx is how do we shift and create a more balanced, sustainable transportation system? One that's integrated through all phases of mobility options and connecting areas of transit-oriented development, which is no new concept to central Florida. We're certainly very pleased with the opportunities that TOD has offered. At Lynx, we want to see ourselves as the center of mobility options in central Florida, whether that's at Lynx Central Station or any of the other transportation modes along the Sunrail line, that you will be able to make very quick and efficient connections, and Lynx will be seen as the mobility provider for this region. The transit-oriented development opportunities that are sprouting up all along the Sunrail line is no surprise to any of us here. You look out our window, we have the Rita Development that is moving forward and what that property I call the Casey Anthony Site. When I first got here, that's where all the trucks and media personnel were housed. But it's, we are working very closely with Rita Development on a very exciting transit-oriented development there. And then just to the other side of I-4, we have the Creative Village sprouting up as we speak. And then we, of course, Sunrail is imminent on the, under construction now, and those trains will be imminently moving down the track in the very near future. The other area we're very excited on, particularly as we think of Sunrail as the spine of our public transit system in central Florida, how do people make efficient and quick and effective transitions from the train to other modes of transit? And in our urban core, we are concentrating on the expansion of our limo service. We are right now under design build on two expansions, and that's the east-west expansion, which will connect the communities of Thornton Park to the venues downtown and out to the Paramore communities on the west. And then also, the Paramore limo expansion, which will connect Lynx Central Station and Sunrail out to the Paramore community, also in the Creative Village. These projects are under, the east-west will soon be going to construction. We had our ribbon cutting just a couple of weeks ago, and the Paramore expansion is moving forward also. But as we continue to look outwards towards that, our goal in the city of Orlando is to be able to overlay the Sunrail corridor with a web of very efficient limo offerings. There will be nowhere in the downtown area that you can't get into access with from our limo expansion. Talked about briefly the east-west and the Paramore expansions, but we're also looking forward to the north-south connections, which will connect the two hospitals, Florida Hospital to the north with ORMC to the south. And we have created a locally preferred alignment on both sectors and are beating the bushes now for the funding, working with the city and the state and the federal government with finding the funds to be able to make this next project, which will complete the downtown limo offerings. The south alignment will connect DOP down with the Soto area in south Orlando, and again, the north alignment connects downtown Lynx Central Station with Florida Hospital. So anyone getting off, whether it's the Sunrail train, or anyone living or working or playing in the downtown area, will be able to make very fast and efficient transportation options and connections on that limo service, in dedicated lanes, making use of technology to ensure that customers have the real-time information so they can make very effective choices in their commuting. Above that, we still are embarking forward on our commercial shelters. One thing that was very evident when I first got to Orlando is the depth and breadth of our shelter program. I was very surprised, I'd never built so many shelters in my career as we build here. But after going through my first summer, I understand absolutely, without a doubt, the need for more shelters, and we are aggressively moving forward on that. You see in the top left-hand corner, our normal shelter, but we're also working with some very interesting creative people to come up with a non-traditional shelter style, which will enable us to really bring some connection and some pizzazz, if not, to certain areas where we will have these non-traditional shelters. We're also imminently, we've talked very much about the impact that the Medical City development will have on this region, and we are working with all of our funding partners to make sure that we have adequate public transit connections to the job opportunities and the development that is going on down at Medical City. You will see here on the blue line is the connections that we will have from Lynx Central Station down to Medical City, and that will be moving forward this summer. The other, Mayor Dyer mentioned the exponential increase we've had in ridership. In 2011, we broke our all-time high in ridership, which we attained in 2008. We built, beat that by almost a million rides. That was a very exciting time for us at Lynx until we got to 2012 and beat that record once again by almost 10%, another million riders. And this first quarter this year, we're on track to even beat last year's record ridership by 6%. Now, that is, it's clear that people are turning towards public transit options, and as we continue to create and design a system that meets the commuting needs of central Floridians, I am firm believer, and I think our Board agrees, that people will continue to turn to public transit as their commuting options. When you're looking to, whether your motivation is to save money or to make use of sustainable transportation options, Lynx is certainly able to provide that. And we're seeing this is not just a blip on the screen, but it is certainly a trend where each year we continue to attract more riders. And that is without any significant increase in our system. We're not adding new routes, we're not serving new areas. These are riders who are turning to public transit, getting out of that single occupant vehicle, and continue to vote with their wallets as they are, continue to make use of transit. Good news from a financial standpoint, Lynx continues to be sustainable moving forward. This year, the Board, over the last five years, our Board of Directors, we've been, as directed Lynx, we've been able to meet the funding needs and the operational needs with generally flat budgets. We have made optimal use of federal ARRA money, stimulus money, to fill some of those gaps that were bought about by the downturn in the economy. But as we're moving forward, we're looking forward to getting back on the funding model, where all of the partners, the funding partners, will be paying according to the amount of service that is operated in their jurisdictions. You will see that we've had somewhat increase in our budget. We have dipped into our reserves and made use of those flexible funds in order to meet those budget deficits, but we're certainly within a much more manageable position, whereas a couple of years ago, that deficit was $6, $7 million. And we're looking forward to implementing the funding model moving forward, which will give us a sustainable, although not dedicated, transportation source of revenue, but certainly one that is sustainable and will enable us to budget long-term and have some idea of what our capabilities to meet the needs of our commuters are into the future. Just as a breakdown, so you know where, our budget going into FY13, adopted budget is $115 million in revenue, and even though there are several shades of colors, I like to divide this pie into three sources. If you combine the federal, state, and then local revenue, and then that that we get from our funding partners, that combines the vast majority of where our funding comes from. Our funding partners is about, is 46. Our customer affairs, advertising, other revenues, just about 35, and then the rest comes from state and federal government. Those are our funding sources, they've been relatively stable over the past several years, and we're hoping to continue that stability moving forward. Then from an expense side, there's no question, wages is the large line share of our expense, paying our operators and mechanics to keep those buses running. Then fuel is the lifeblood of our operations. Our Board of Directors made a fantastic decision last year when we began hedging our fuel purchases. We have now locked in, 85% of our fuel is locked in through the rest, through October of this year, at a level that is significantly lower than the wholesale market. That gives us budget stability moving forward, and we don't have these peaks and valleys where we're being impacted by the vagaries of the commodities market, and we no longer have to come back to the Boards, to Commissioners, asking for additional revenue to meet fuel costs. Our fuel was locked in, we have stability, we've met, we've come in under budget, and we will be continuing on that path moving forward. But that concludes my presentation. Mayor Dyer, members of the Commission, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those now. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, John. Great update. I want to acknowledge Pat Christensen, who's the General Counsel to the Board, is with us today, and Jay Marsh, she's the Director of Government Affairs, I guess, close enough. Commissioner Stewart.
John, thank you very much, and I appreciate your work. The one thing I hear over and over is dedicated funding source. I guess probably directed to you and to the mayor, where are we in terms of trying to create this dedicated funding source? We've done a good job now figuring out where the future is and what our real exposure is, but I'm convinced that to get to the next level, we're going to have to find some new funding sources that can't rely on grants from the feds. We're just going to have to do something that's going to, the committee's going to pay for. And then...
Commissioner, I'll take a quick shot at that. I think we've, at least in the 10 years I've been here, talked about dedicated funding for Lynx and other transit options ad nauseam and have not moved the needle very far. Other than one year, we were able to get the rental car surcharge out of the legislature, and Governor Bush vetoed it. And we would have, we fought from the city side to put a very high percentage of that into transit. The county wanted more into roads, and I don't remember where we came out in the inter-local agreement on that, but that's still a potential source. There's several others. But I'm going to ask Commissioner Lyndham, who chairs Metro Plan now, to talk about, just quickly, the subcommittee that Commissioner DeLaurie chairs that's looking into and going to make some recommendations on transportation funding in general.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, John, for being here. That was the first one I was going to make, Commissioner Stewart. I've been on Metro since 2000, and it has been a very difficult road to plow because how do you get these funds? Commissioner DeLaurie, County Commissioner from Seminole County and past Chairperson of Metro Plan, is chairing our funding committee for Metro Plan that really involves the whole MPOs, the municipal planning agencies, and have agreed with the priorities of Metro Plan to look at the 250 rental surcharge, to still move toward dedicated funds. We are also looking at the possibility of counties using up their tax capacity, which isn't a good idea right now, because in Florida, almost all of our counties are led by folks who don't like to raise any taxes. So that's not going to happen. But we have a group of people that's nonpartisan in the sense of our vision, who's been working at this for quite a while, and I believe with Mayor Dyer being now on Metro Plan and the Chairperson of Lynx, that, and with Commissioner DeLaurie, having the same priority that I have, that we're going to get somewhere, and Mayor Jacobs, who supports this. We have great support, it's just, we just don't know whether it's possible to come through the legislature. I believe, John, that once we get these dedicated funds, whether we get it passed and kick in two or three years from now, whenever it kicks in, that we truly will be the epicenter for transit. Right now, it's very, I think, trying for all of us to think that every year, we've got to look at gas taxes, which is decreasing, we've got to look at all these other options by cities and counties for you, and it makes your own budget quite rocky. That is one of our top priorities, the Metro Plan, for the MPOs. Everybody's on the same page, but, and there was another one, Mayor, I can't remember, that we really want to look at the possibility of cities now being able, if we can get it passed legislature, to utilize tax dollars that counties won't advance. So we're on the right path, and I think we have the will to do it, and listen to me, it's not a partisan thing when it comes to trying to get Lynx here. It is only when it gets back to your own seat, when you sit down and say, oh, no, we're not raising any taxes. But I'm very, very hopeful, Mayor Dyer, that you're going to get with Lynx the support. I think, and if we don't do it this year, in the next two years, I believe, in the next two to three years, Lynx will get that dedicated funding because of this council, I know everybody in this council pretty much believes in it. I've seen other councils, and we've got to do it, but Mary Lynn is still here, because he agrees, I mean, I don't know anybody who doesn't accept, just a few folks, but I don't know what else. Mayor Dyer keeps, is being on the tip of the legislature far more than I do, but I know I'll be going to Tallahassee, so I better notify TV9 right now that I will be traveling there as much as necessary to help with this and help with the organization. And I want to say a real special thanks to you and Jay and your whole organization. And you've had a great Board over there for years. That's the most progressive Board for transit to be, be very, very mixed in terms of partisan politics, don't you think so, Mayor Dyer?
I think so.
And Mayor Dyer's been very progressive, so he's going to have a great team. He has his council members here to support him. We are pretty progressive when it comes to transit, because in my district, a huge percentage of my constituents use Lynx, and it's very important, and not only that, to get to jobs outside of the district. So I think we're going to look at the 250 transit and the possibilities of cities looking at their own tax opportunities.
Let me just follow up, and you're probably, Commissioner Stewart, getting more information than you possibly could have wanted on this, but I had a meeting of the Florida Urban Partnership on Friday, and that's the mayors of the seven largest cities in the state of Florida. And one of the agenda items that the Urban Partnership is pursuing, at the urging of Mayor Buckhorn from Tampa, is exactly what Commissioner Lyndham has referenced, which would be giving a referendum on sales tax for transit to municipal governments. And if you look back at Blueprint, what do we call, what was that, our Transportation Initiative?
Mobility.
Mobility, Mobility 2020, it passed in the urban cores and failed out in east and west Orange County, and the same thing happened to Hillsborough County on a initiative they had, I don't know if it was last November, November before, I guess. And it passed in metro Tampa and failed out in the rural parts of Hillsborough County. So the thought is to give cities the ability to do that by referendum, which cuts across the other thing that we're starting to study, and that's the Denver model, what they did, they combined, I think there's nine or 11 counties that came together and they did a regional approach, and they did it far more encompassing. So they had homeless services, science and arts, transit, and two or three things that they divided, like a quarter of 1% of the sales tax for one thing. So it's kind of like we did the community venues, where you had a little bit for everybody, and there were a lot of people invested. So that's another approach to look at, is doing something with a three or four-county region that hits a bunch of different subject matters. So we need to look at both of those approaches over the next couple of years, and I think the perfect timing is after Sunrail is up and running, because I think once people have used Sunrail, they're going to see what transit is all about, and if you don't have a good bus system servicing Sunrail, then Sunrail's not going to be successful. So raise all boats.
Well, that's kind of the core I'm trying to get to, is I think it's, it seems that we're always looking at some milestone ahead of us to move towards that. And I, and looking at, and I don't have the expertise that you and Commissioner Lyndham have, but the idea of having us begin that process now, so that the moment we're ready to turn the switch, if we wait until two or three years down the road, we're going to allow opposition to muster up enough support to be able to counter this. The other question you mentioned about the, are there some changes coming in the local sources formula? I think you had talked about each paying their fair share.
Right.
And I know that we take, I guess, almost all of our portion comes out of our gas tax, I think, don't we, from that standpoint, so?
Yes, that is the, the funding partners for Lynx, Orange, Osceola, Seminole County, and the city of Orlando, in the past had a funding model that allocated, based on hours of service of Lynx service within each jurisdiction, multiplied by our cost per hour. And that will enable us to not only... will enable us to not only plan long-term, because you knew generally how much service was going to be offered each year, going out into a five-year horizon, but also gave you an understanding of exactly what the impact and cost of the service was in the current year within the jurisdiction. Now, the impact of the economy really threw us all for a loop for a number of years, and we had to almost lock in at a flat budget rate. But I think now, as we're starting to turn that corner, the Funding Partners believe we can go back to the funding model, which will give Lynx the ability to do a little more long-term planning with some stability in our budget, although not sustained dedicated revenue, which will, again, would be our ultimate solution on that.
I notice a large portion is federal and state funding. And I guess probably the question you could ask every hour is, what's the long-term impact of what's happening in DC? And how it's going to impact us here locally? Do we see anything that we'll see a substantial change in the next three to five years in terms of transportation funding for you?
Well, I think the, we're all still trying to wrap our hands around the new MAP-21, which is a transportation reauthorization bill which just passed last fall. I think the positive aspect of MAP-21 for Lynx is that the federal funding is more formula-driven, and that formula is largely based on ridership. It's very similar to what you will hear from the hospitality industry and the tourism industry. Heads on pillows is what drives it. For us, it's rear ends and seats. And certainly, our ridership has continued to go up, and so as we are providing, as we show central Floridians that we can provide effective and efficient transportation options, people are beginning to turn to public transit. And as our federal dollars will be more driven by those increases in ridership, that's a positive for us. Now, there's a, you know, the other side of that coin, we no longer see earmarks for transportation. The federal dollars are much more competitive in going after those. And so on the capital side, that is a little less, it's a little different in how we attain that funding. But I am encouraged by, as we continue to gain additional ridership, that additional federal funding will flow as a result of that.
Well, thank you for your service, and thank you for the work that we are working on in the Rosemont area. Want to keep that up to, keep that moving forward.
Absolutely. The Rosemont superstop is very high on our list of priorities.
Thank you.
Okay, I've got Commissioner Ings and Commissioner Ortiz and Commissioner Lyman. So Commissioner Ings.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, John. Thank you so much for your presentation today. But as it relates with ads and bus wrapping as a revenue source, where is Lynx with that particular process and how much funding is being generated from that?
Absolutely. This year's also been a record year for us in terms of our advertising revenue. If that, for us, is an indication of the economy getting a little better, we're seeing a much higher use of our bus wraps, which is our highest selling. In 2005, I believe, we netted about $1.2 million. We're on track for about 1.7 this year from our advertising. So we are aggressively pushing that. We are bought in, outsourced our marketing of our advertising, both onboard vehicles and in shelters where that's appropriate. And they have absolutely outperformed even our wider streams on that.
Well, great. Also, the Bus Islands, there's one in Washington Shores. It's like a little depot there.
Yes, sir.
And what I was interested to find out were, was are there any plans to improve this particular depot? And if so, when do you expect to get started with that?
As a matter of fact, our superstops have got, are many Lynx Central stations throughout our operating area. We have the Rosemont stop, I just referred to with Commissioner Stewart. We have our Washington Shores area. Our board has an item before this month at the next board meeting, which is, will enhance our rehab and rehabilitation budget for that. As our ridership continues to increase and more service is going into those areas, we're putting particular additional stress on those superstops. So we're increasing the number of times that they're cleaned. We've embarked on a very interesting program where we're putting solar-powered trash compacters at our superstops. It gives us more capacity as those units continue to compact the trash there, and we don't, in the areas that we have used them, in other superstops, you don't have the overflow of trash around. We're paying particular attention to the look and operations of our superstops. And I believe with our board's concurrence, we will see an increased rehab, cleanup, and power washing of those stops in the near future.
Okay. And also, you're obviously considering lighting at night at those superstops. Bus shelters along Bruton Boulevard, and I understand there might be some right-of-way issues and stuff. Jay Marsh and I have been talking, thank you, Jay. But what I'm concerned about is updated and new shelters going in along Bruton Boulevard, along with trash receptacles, because they do seem to generate a lot of trash. And specifically along Bruton Boulevard, from McLeod Road to Columbia, and then also along McLeod Road, and this one I didn't say to Jay Marsh, but along McLeod Road from Rio Grande to Kirkman. And bus shelters that are really going to keep the people safe from the elements, and then also lighting at night in those shelters, too. And any comments on those?
Thank you. I am not familiar with those locations, but we will, I will take a look at those and make sure that we address whatever issues are there. But I think strategically about all of our shelters. Number one, we have a new shelter program where we continue to add probably about 150 shelters throughout our service area a year in our capital program. But at the same time, where we're adding new shelters, we have to make sure that we're keeping up with the shelters that are already in place. And lighting is becoming a very specific challenge for us. And we are looking at not only providing additional lighting, but lighting that is more sustainable and more environmentally friendly. We have just rehabbed our Lynx Central Station with LED lights there that provide greater coverage, better illumination at a lower cost, and much more environmentally friendly. Now that we have identified that, now the challenge is, how do we implement that in throughout our system in an area that makes sense and fits in with the environment of the community? We don't want to have so much lighting where we're lighting up entire neighborhoods, homes, and others. But we certainly have to take into consideration the safety of our passengers who are waiting there.
Okay, last question. Monorail system, are you looking at a Lynx monorail system around Orlando, central Florida area?
I have not heard of the monorail system, but we have had some conversations with the Maglev project that is looking to connect the airport to the convention center. But if it moves on wheels and we can move at all, move people more effectively, then that's all public transit, and I'm all for it.
Well, you know, it'd be good to see the little Lynx emblem in the air going around Orlando and out to the airport and to the attractions and that kind of thing. And that's another way of obviously getting people around, too, especially the visitors that come in because they're used to those kinds of things, and it makes it a lot easier for them to get in and around as well. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ortiz?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Thank you for everything you guys do, especially helping the community and attending to their needs. And listening to your statistics, 29 million, I mean, the ridership went up about a million more, 20, to 29 million?
Yes, sir.
I know you're not going to have this at hand, but later on, I'd like to see how many of those come out of the southeast, specifically District 2. And along the lines of the conversation of the Sunrail and connectivity, I was looking at your PowerPoint that showed connectivity between Lynx Station and Medical City. But I didn't get a chance to observe if that's going through a Semeron Corridor or somewhere else. Can you go back and maybe put that in there? I mean, the PowerPoint.
The Medical City?
Yes. Is that going, I mean, or I can just, you can just tell me directly, where's that route going through?
The express.
Is it the expressway?
The express, yes. How about, sir, if I come and talk with you about that afterward?
You know what I'm getting at.
Yes, sir.
I'm just trying to push the Semeron Corridor. And I know we talk about some plans, and I'm really looking forward to discuss those in terms of connectivity. And I thank you once again for everything you guys do.
Actually, Commissioner Ortiz, I do have the ridership from District 2.
Oh, you do?
There are 11 routes that operate Lynx routes in District 2, and of that, about 6.6 million riders.
Wow. You see, I like to hear that, because that means we have work to do in that area.
Yes, sir. And the Semeron Corridor is spine of that service area for us.
I thank you. Thank you much. I appreciate it.
If you had those numbers readily at hand, it makes me believe that you probably have them for each individual commission district, so maybe you can just, after the meeting, provide.
I think so.
Commissioner Lyman?
That's a lot of folks, Commissioner.
It is.
Well, Mayor, the part that got me to thinking was when John put up that, that part of the presentation that showed all of the seniors over 65, and the only person I was trying to look at was the chief of police. Don't come after the old people. So Mayor, our next chief, we want somebody over 65 who will go after the young folks and not try to take our license because we're over 65. And we're going to dominate. But that's all because you had all these 60, over 65, over 65. We've got a, you know, chief is kind of young, and, you know, he may have those little guys out there trying to take our license. So don't tell everybody, all these seniors are going to be out there.
We want you all to come and make use of our memo servers.
I know, but y'all may be out there, you're trying to get us on the road and then get us on the transit, I'm sorry. And chief going to help us get on that bus. That was the funniest, I'm sorry, optic I've seen all day. I was like, oh, my lord, he shouldn't have said that. OPD is going to be after us, the troops is going to be after us. Everybody with gray hair, I've got a red wig at home, and I'm going to start wearing my red wig. Simple as that. But thank you so much. But I had a couple of questions. If I can get that age 65 out of my mind right now, and hopefully nobody comes after us. The question I had, we were talking about Paramore and Creative Village, you know, and just recently, just a very, very small group of people were talking about Creative Village. Of course, we had so many public meetings, and when people don't come to meetings and they want to ask more questions. But I'm very pleased with the way our Paramore BRT is going and our East West BRT is going. And people don't understand, we're getting grants to do this. This is not, you just think of it one day and it happens. A lot of work goes into this, and when you have public meetings and they don't show up until the last minute, you know my thinking on that. It's like, speak to the hands. So thank you for including that and showing where we are in that piece. And the sad part about light rail, and I have to keep bringing it up, is that through travel, I've gone to see where our light rail dollars have gone, from Denver, when they started with their very, very small alignment, to Charlotte. I remember years ago, Commissioner Sheen and I were in Salt Lake City. We were on their little do-dilly around the city. That thing has grown, and it's just phenomenally what happens when you get one alignment that people can understand, including Cleveland. But for DC, I have my little card that you go tap the thing.
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, I've really moved up on those systems. All you got to do is get on the train going the wrong way. But it's a wonderful way to move our people and the size of Orlando, Dublin, so we're going to get on this. But I wanted you to explain to us the reauthorization bill that deals with transit versus parking. And what can we do about that as a municipality or as businesses? How does that fit into the scheme of things by providing more revenue?
Commissioner Lyman, I believe you're referring to the transit, the transportation commuter, the commuter tax benefit.
Tax benefit, right.
That was a part of that reauthorization.
Yes.
The one positive thing is that the, that bill reinstated parity between parking benefits and public transit use. In the past, like many people are used to having healthcare benefits, whether that's flexible spending accounts or other health savings accounts, where those funds are taken out pre-tax dollars, so that you can make use of those pre-tax dollars for healthcare services. Well, the same options can be made for public transit and for parking. On the public transit side, an individual who participates in the program can write off now up to $234 per month and utilize that pre-tax in order to make use of public transit. At Lynx, a monthly fare card is $100. And so an individual can use, buy a monthly fare card, have unlimited use of Lynx, and in the future, Sunrail, and use that pre-tax. The great thing about MAP-21 is that it reinstated parity, whereas parking, it was $234, and for transit, it had gone back to 112. Our board of directors engaged with the, our federal legislative delegation and through its support behind parity, and that parity was reinstated. So I think that will be a very prominent tool as we're looking for, not only to Sunrails, attracting new riders to Sunrail, but also to Lynx and public transit, not only for our current riders, but also for attracting new riders. You can make use of that using pre-tax dollars and save money at the same time while you're changing your commuting habits.
I think we have to continue our education of the public. And I think it was Commissioner Stewart or someone mentioned, how do we know these things? And I know Metro Plan has a very progressive, I think, educational outreach for the community, and this is very, very important. I know I went to several meetings with Pat when we were looking at high-speed rail. Thousands of people seemed to be there. People want to know about transportation options and alternatives. And I think as long as you do outreach, and Metro Plan and all the entities that do it, it's going to have us prepared, Commissioners, our community prepared, where we don't jump up a surprise. It's just going to always be somebody who's going to come up at the last minute and say, "I missed the meeting." You can have 25, "Well, I missed them." So that part is okay. But we have a great responsibility, to me, to keep educating our community about what is available. Now, the one question I had regarding those superstops, and not just superstops, but all of our shelters, and you know, I send an email every now and then, because it's a great place for the homeless to sleep. And I pass them every morning, and those little compact things, I probably broken two of them trying to put those signs in them, but I wish they were a little wider. But is it possible for us to get cameras, not only the lighting, but cameras? Because if there is, now, chief knows, I try to deal with the police thing, and every officer tells me to stop trying to be the police, too. But I believe things, bad things can happen when it's not illuminated, and people who are more fragile to be protected. And I think at least if something happens, we'll have cameras there.
Yes, Commissioner, we are, that is occurring as we speak. We have, at our superstops, we are deploying our closed-circuit television cameras that, throughout our superstops. Those are areas where we have large numbers of passengers and vehicles coming in there. And it's not just the lighting that I spoke of in regard with Commissioner Ings, but having that surveillance and all of that information coming back to our central radio room, we're working on that expansion now. So not only will you see additional lighting, cleaner superstops, but also the installation of those CCTV cameras.
And all of the areas that could be, what do you call it, like OPDs, what is the thing they say for?
The hours?
No, not the hours. It's the, when it's not safe, and you put up the certain fence. What is that, chief?
Certain fence.
You know, you have a certain fence because it's not, you can't do this, you can't do that, because you got to be able to watch it and look at it. What is that process called? Parking.
it and, what is that, uh, process called apartments?
Oh, neighborhood watch?
Set text, yes, 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 that's it. Um...
I thought we were playing password.
We need to make sure that, um, those areas that may be more vulnerable, and OPD or the sheriff's office should be working with you to say, "This makes people more vulnerable here," and start targeting those areas along with the superstops to make sure that lone person who's out there has an extra eye watching if something does go wrong, or people need to know there's a camera out there. They don't need to know where it is, um, that it's not as dangerous. Uh, we really want to make the areas safe, and I think that's another part of it.
Absolutely, Commissioner. And we have a great working relationship with our law enforcement partners, and we will certainly look into it.
Yeah. And the next largest homeless coalition is in front of the sheriff's office. I have to call him every day. Uh, there's like two or three people sleep in front of his office every day, at the shelter there, and I call you about it from time to time. I'm not trying to get people moved. I just want to make sure it's clean and, uh, it's safe, whether they're there or not there. But when, um, large number of people are sleeping, they don't sleep on top, because they can't sleep on top of the thing anymore. They just go to the ground, sleep there, and people who want to catch the bus, uh, scared, because they don't know what the situation is with the folks there. But I am very impressed with the work that you're doing in your agency, uh, and how we're moving along. And this is sort of a small piece of concern. It's like low-hanging fruit, uh, for no better word than that. And thank you very, very, very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, John, I just want to say thank you for coming in and, and sharing that with you. Also, I'd like to thank you and your team for the, the guidance and leadership on the express route to Medical City. Um, we, big, big, uh, significant, uh, opportunity for job creation, and our ability to get folks down there in an expedient manner is, is key. So thanks for doing that. We'll keep our eye on that. We've got our fingers crossed that we get a lot of ridership and, uh, a lot of workers coming to Medical City and back. Thank you.
Absolutely, sir. And Medical City is an exciting country, and not just, uh, the jobs that are afforded there, but our veterans have to get to that fantastic hospital there, and Nemours and the others there. We have a great opportunity, uh, to make those connections so that people have access to all of the great things that are happening at Medical City. We're happy to be able to provide that. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
That concludes our workshop for today.